I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda except to remove the closed session from the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Concerned agenda, has the minutes of the last meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make the motion that we approve that matter.
Any discussion, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Public comments, anybody wishing to come and address the board? Or ask to come forward now and state your name, address for the record. Anybody wishing to address the board? No one coming forward? I now will introduce Donna Bailey Taylor. She's going to give us an update on the Johnson County Visitors Bureau.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. Always excited to come talk about tourism and what we're doing for Benson. Here's a short presentation for you on the history of the Benson 2% tax. I have a few of some questions about how did you launch the tax to promote Benson. There's a handout plus some backup material on the House Bill 945 that was introduced in 2006. It was introduced for a 2% tax for the town of Benson. And just a short history on why the town did that. The towns of Smithville and Selma had introduced a tax in 2001. And then Benson and Kinley also decided they wanted a tax. So all those funds are collected from the hotels. Staying in those communities, when visitors stay, they pay a room tax. And that money's paid into the hotels. The hotels send it to the town finance officers. And then those monies are sent to the county finance office. The tourism authority was charged with spending those monies on your behalf. And that's what we have been doing since 2006. In the middle there, you can see that's the actual money spent on programs for the town of Benson. And just a couple of examples, there's billboards we've been doing in different projects since 2007. And it's been, you know, five or $6,000 up to $10,000 a year. The last couple of years, there's been bigger expenditures. In 2018, we helped with the dog park. We pulled money forward to help pay that project off. And then in 2019, expenditures on the music programs that are running in downtown. On the back, I titled that up for you and divided it based on marketing program. So over the last 12 years, there's been $95,906 invested in marketing and tourism-related programs. Just an example, $50,656 was marketing and $45,250 has been on tourism-related projects. Tourism paid for the wayfinding signs that you see around town. That dates a few years back when Joe Stallings was here. And the Benson Dog Park, you can see the funds that were spent on that and then the downtown speakers. Obviously, there's some examples of some of the print pieces that we've done, some billboards and some advertising over the years. That's not everything we've done, just to show you some of the design work that we do on your behalf.
Having read the law, does anybody have any questions of Donna? The county tax is 3%.
Yes.
And all that goes to the county?
Then I'll go to the Johnson County Tourism Authority.
The 2% that Benson collects, 2/3 of that goes to the county and 1/3 stays in Benson, is that right?
Now, the whole 2% that's collected in Benson goes to the county, which is us. And then we spend it on their behalf. You have your own line item in our budget and then you have for revenues, a whole line item under expenditures. So we spend everything that you collect in Benson, it's all spent on Benson.
Okay.
None of it is spent on anything else. It's all dedicated to your town.
Does that percentage ever change?
It's always been 2%.
It's always been 2%, so it'll never change.
Not unless you want to change it.
I was wondering.
Yeah.
Who makes the determination as to how the 2% is spent?
There is a tourism marketing committee here in Benson made up of some individuals in the community. And we work on budget planning and talk about billboards and print and, you know, whatever advertising the committee wants to do. And once that marketing plan is set, we put that into our budget and then we execute that on your behalf. So basically, you determine how you want to spend it is what we'll do.
How far in advance would you have to know if there was something specifically that we wanted to spend the 2% on for a given year? When do you need to know that?
We go into budget planning, kind of like you do, like now. Starting in February, we're already working on projecting what our revenues are going to be for next year. We do have some contracts in place, like billboards, that have multiple-year contracts. So some of that is already committed based on the dog park campaign. If you don't know, that's my grandpuppy in the billboards. But, you know, some of it's already committed. The rest of it is open to whatever projects the committee wants to do. So we go into planning in February and we complete our budget process by, like, May and June, like you guys do. We work on our fiscal year budget.
Any other questions? Is there any written reports that anybody wants to highlight? Now we go into public hearing. We'll have the public hearing in there.
Partnership for Children.
Partnership for Children. Oh, I'm sorry.
You forgot.
I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness. No, it's all good. I'm only going to be like four minutes of y'all's time. My name is Bethmore. I'm with the Partnership for Children of Johnson County. And we are so excited that we got a little mini grant from the North Carolina Early Education Coalition. And what this is about is to raise awareness, public awareness, for infants, toddlers, their families, their educators, and everybody that supports those little babies all around our county. We figured out a little while ago that kids aren't born at five when they start school. So those early years are critical to proper development. So what we're doing is we're doing this fun little bus tour. And we would like to personally invite all of y'all and any guests that you may have to come along with us on one of these days. We're doing two different dates. And we are going to start at 8:00 a.m. at Johnson Community College. What we're going to do is tour around the county. We're doing a stop in Benson to some childcare centers here. We're going to see Pre-K. We're going to see a bunch of different things on the tour. And also, there's going to be a lot of guest speakers on the bus as well to really go into what is facing the families, working families of infants and toddlers in our county. Without healthy infants and toddlers, we have no future workforce. So this is critical for economic development. And we would really like your participation. Again, we'll feed you lunch, but your invitation is on your table. And you do have a handout about some of the things that we're going to be discussing on the bus tour. So this is just a little highlight preview. And we would love for you to come. You just need your RSVP, I think by, I don't know, might say when. If we RSVP to the partnership so that we know how many people to expect, how many seats are on the bus. So thank you for your time. I can answer any questions if you have any about the bus tours.
Does anybody have any questions?
Good. Thank you so much.
Now we're down to the public hearing. We'll now open the public hearing. I will ask Aaron Joseph to come forward. Tell us what we want to talk about.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. Tonight, we have two special use requests. The first one on the agenda is for the placement of a manufactured home in accordance with our Unified Development Ordinance. A manufactured home can only be placed on a property with a special use permit. The address in question is located at 841 Banner Elk Road. Property owners are Christopher and Erica Adcock. They would like to reside in the manufactured home if it is approved. The surrounding uses of adjacent properties are primarily residential. There is a manufactured home just a little down the road, a little ways, but the other homes are single-family residential. I will note that there was a manufactured home on the property. It existed about for several years and it was removed about a year or so ago. And so that is why we are, this request is before you this evening because that existing manufactured home was removed. And so they will need to get permission with a special use permit. The utilities would be septic and well for the property. And staff recommends approval. The planning board recommends approval as well. This being a special use quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing, I will ask the board to note that findings of fact must be found determining approval or disapproval. And if you would like, I can read off the findings of fact. One, that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans submitted and approved. That the application meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning and the town code of ordinances or other applicable regulations. That the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. And the fourth, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies to the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of adjacent properties. So you must look at these four findings of fact to approve or disapprove the request. Then I will also ask the mayor to accept the application into the record.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this into the record.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, we'll open the public hearing to the public. And anybody that's in favor of 2018-04, come forward. Anybody that's in favor of 2018.04, come forward. No one coming forward? Anybody that is object to 2018.04? Does anyone object to 2018.04? No one coming forward? We close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I make a motion that we...
Any other questions? Well, Erin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
All right. We're on special use permits, stock report case SUP 2019.01.
All right, thank you. The applicant, Exit 325 LLC, located at 3405 NC 242 North, has submitted an application for the, to allow the storage and sale of lumber material before you have the site If you have the map, you can see the vicinity map here. The surrounding and adjacent property uses are primarily commercial. There are a few residential, single-family residential properties located adjacent to the site. There is Benson Area Medical, it's just to the southwest of the property. And then you have Interstate I-40, Exit 325, just to the east and northeast of the property. Currently, there exists a fuel station and a convenience store and restaurant, Marathon Gas Station. The applicant would like to have storage of lumber with potentially future sales in a sales office. But primarily, he would like to store lumber. And if you can see on the site plan, the area that will be improved for the storage of the lumber. There was no increase in pervious surface, so the Stormwater Management Division with Johnson County did not need to review this application. We ask that the applicant, that the special use permit be approved with the conditions that the site outline is the boundary of the special use and not the entire three acres to the rear of the property. Just the improvement area would comprise the special use permit. The Benson Fire Department has reviewed the plans. And you will have comments, you'll see the comments from the Benson Fire Department. I'll ask that the application packet be entered into the record. The planning board has reviewed the application and they do recommend approval based upon the findings of fact and with the condition that all standards be met per the Unified Development Ordinance and the fire code, the North Carolina Fire Code.
I'll entertain a motion to take case 2019-01 into the record.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. We opened the public hearing on 2019.01. Anyone wishing to come in favor, come forward and Ms. Joseph will square you in. Give your name and address.
Do you swear or plan to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. State your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Blenson, 653 Federal Road, Benson. Thank y'all. My ignorance of the process and rules may have made this somewhat difficult and I apologize to everybody for that truly. And I appreciate the help that I've gotten to try to get this far. I'll answer any questions you've got. The one, one of the areas that I may not have communicated clearly, and I don't know where I stand now, is we believe that we were applying for the special use for the whole three acres. Our immediate improvement, so our plan was to just put up a couple buildings immediately for excess storage. The operation that we've bought is in Four Oaks and is ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. I wanted to put up the buildings for temporary storage with the longer-term vision of trying to move the retail portion of our business up there and adding on in phases as we went. And that may take four or five years. So, you know, our intent was to ask for the whole three acres to be able, to be used for that use. I'm not sure what I can do about that now or where I stand. So I'll answer any questions you've got.
Erin, on the difference in acreage, is that limited because of the retail part?
No. The limits, the special use permit is based upon the site plan. So if, as you can see, the rear portion of the site plan, it does not show any improvements or development. You wouldn't be able to approve something that is not there essentially. Furthermore, the back portion of the property is pervious and that would require a review by stormwater and sedimentation and erosion because you would be disturbing greater than an acre of land. That has not been shown on the site plan. So we have to look at specifically what is being shown on the site plan, what those improvements are. Now, it can be approved this evening based off of his site plan. Per the Unified Development Ordinance, it would, when he decides to improve the back portion of the property, it would constitute a major deviation from the site plan or from the special use permit and the site plan. So he would just have to come back before the board to have his site plan and his special use permit updated to reflect those changes made to the rear portion of the property. And then it would, it must go for technical review before Johnson County Stormwater Sedimentation and Erosion, the Fire Department. It changes the dynamics of the approval. And that's why we are stating that the special use permit is approved based solely off of what the site plan is and what the improvements are that you can look to and speak to.
So if he wanted to grow that, all you got to do is come back to us and...
Yes.
Or to the board.
And have it modified.
And have it modified.
Yes, sir.
He wouldn't have to do any more work on the site plan?
Well, he, yes, he would. So if he's going to add, you know, several more buildings or if the configuration of the site plan changes, if he wants to move those buildings to the rear portion, he would bring forth another site plan. We would, it would go through the review process again. It would go before Johnson County, the Fire Department, the necessary review agencies. And so, once he would do that, he would bring it forth and receive comments, same process. But we would look at a modified site plan and it would be updated.
Does anybody have any questions?
The total acreage that we're considering, it's only one acre?
It's less than an acre. It's roughly .8 acres. And it's also gravel, which is, it's impervious surface. So he has not increased any impervious surfaces on the site. So it did not require review or permitting from stormwater and sedimentation and erosion. So his site is, is it about 38,000 square feet or so, I believe?
So, help me understand, did you just say too, I hear you say that we could approve, we can approve the whole thing if we desire to or not?
If you desire to, but you must keep in mind that you are basing your approval off the findings of fact. Would it be wise to, would it meet those findings of fact if you're approving it and you don't know what the stormwater sedimentation and erosion conditions are on the back portion of that property? Would that be a public and safety issue? So you have to keep that in mind. So, you know, if, he could modify the site plan and bring it back to you all. And I'm not sure if you would want to do that and go through that process now, showing those improvements, having it reviewed by stormwater, bring it back before the board and have them look at the entire site or just move forward with just this portion. And I'm not sure what your future projections, how far in advance you would like that rear portion to be developed. And you could certainly do that. But if you're ready to move and you want to go, we can look at just that portion.
I got a question. The name of the business is Exit 325 LLC?
That's the, yes, that's the property owner.
On the site plan, it says Exit 335.
Oh, yes, it does. That is a typo, but it should say...
Okay.
Exit 325 is the property owner.
So, on my rezoning special use application, I got somebody smarter than me to help me and the, under the request as warranted and other, and we put entitlements to enhance the future development of the property. And that really is what, and I guess I got tangled up along the line. And I am probably going to have to redo the site plan and come back in at this point, I see that. But what I wanted to know from day one and what I would like to leave here today is, what would be the pleasure of the board? And would the board find any problem with the concept of the retail lumber yard being there? Understanding that I'm going to have to redo the plan once again to include the whole portion, this is where I stand. Obviously, I don't want to build, I wanted to build just one building starting out because that was my immediate need and that's what I could afford. But I wanted to have the permission that I was going to be able to develop the whole site going forward in the future. In other words, I didn't want to build one building and then find out, well, you can't, you know, you can't operate a lumber yard there. We're not going to let you add on to the buildings or all that. And I understand the buildings will have to be laid out in accordance with the code and meet the stormwater and erosion control. But I guess at this point, what I'm asking is, does anybody see a problem with using the whole site if I go back in and redo the plan once again? And, you know, if it's a problem, tell me now and I'll quit.
Well, I can only speak for one Commissioner. And I think it's a fine use of the land. I don't have any problem with that.
I don't have a problem with what I see right now, but we don't have everything that's before us either because there would be additional, the county would then have to come in. If you had all 3.38 acres or whatever it was and you were seeking it all, then they could come in and find something that was not acceptable. And then we would have to base our decision based on that. As it is right now, I don't, I mean, I don't foresee a problem with the way it is presented. And as it stands right now, this is not for sale. This is not to sell lumber, it's to store.
Well, where I'm, I, that really represents the sale and the retail. And I had the office on there due to my confusion and ignorance. That's the way I had it drawn. Later on, because of the special use permit, I'm just asking for storage at the current time. And I guess that's where it's become confusion, you know? My immediate use is one, just storage. My long-term goal is I want to open a retail operation there in phases. And I don't want to, you know, anyhow, that's, so we will, I guess if you can see fit to approve the use as it is, we'll just resubmit and modify and go that route.
And I'll make the motion that you do that.
I got a question. I know the store and everything's an extension of the town. Is that... Is that as well as the whole 3.8 acres?
Yeah, it's all along.
The entire lot, which I believe is roughly five.
And I do want to just, you know, and I want to say this too. I mean, you know, some portion of the store might be used in, in that business, you know, and I just want to disclose that. In other words, we may have some type of offices in there or, you know, some ancillary advertising or whatever. I mean, they are under the same business and under the same umbrella, so there will be some overlap there as long as I'm the one operating the store, so.
The retail component of it is not necessarily the issue. That the main use would be the storage, which requires the special use permit. So, you know, he would be allowed to sell when you reach that point. It's the storage of the lumber that's the predominant use that is requiring the special use permit per our ordinance. So, you know, you wouldn't have an issue there selling your lumber when you get to that point.
And the Fire Department's looked at all of this, and everything is okay through them. The requirements that are there would be the extinguishers wherever you're gonna have to have them and the hydrants.
Yes, those were the comments. The Fire Department had ten comments, namely, was the fire hydrant that must be located at the site.
And I'll just throw this out there. The fire hydrant, I read in the code that if it's on an access road and it, you know, it can be used by the neighbor, property owner, that's a different thing than if it's in the interior. I'd just say on the fire hydrant, we would be willing to put that wherever somebody thought that was the most use. And I don't know if there's any help on some tap fees there or anything you wanted to give me if we could share with our neighbors. We'd certainly take any help there we could get. I don't know what all the rules are with that, but...
Is there a hydrant there now for the store and all that?
It's in front of the Benson Area Medical Center on the south side. It's really further away than we realized. You know, we really did not. And that's what I say, I think we could locate it somewhere, and it could be used for, you know, those four lots Dale's got and his office and potentially, you know, it would, what it would really be would be a good spot for the fire truck to fill up in an emergency because, you know, it could get in my parking lot up out there in the gravel, and they wouldn't be in the road. I mean, it really could have a lot of benefit if it was placed properly, you know, so.
Also, there's a fence requirement around this, right?
Yes, there is a fence, per the Fire Code, there is a fence requirement.
I wanted to, so, on the fence, and I just, darn, I've had a picture. So, chain link is not permissible. So, I did just bring this picture and see if the fence like that would work. Maybe they won't look at it. Maybe, I don't know who makes that determination, but...
The Unified Development Ordinance has, it specifies the standard, it has to be a high-quality material, treated wood, it can be vinyl. There are a couple of exceptions of what it cannot be, Constantine or wire, that is what that is, and chain link. And so, that, you know, would be reviewed. Once you, if the application is approved, the special use is approved this evening, those are the things that we would look at in office when building permits are submitted and determined and work with the applicant on what's material and what's permitted and prohibited by the Unified Development Ordinance.
Any other questions? Is there anybody else in favor? Okay, is there anybody opposed? Is there anybody opposed? I'll entertain a motion.
I think I have a motion on the floor.
Oh, yeah, correct. I haven't recognized it. Make it again.
I make a motion that we accept the, is it the special permit?
Special use permit.
Special use, okay. I make a motion that we approve that.
And you're approving it for the defined?
The one acre.
The one acre you're talking about right now, okay?
What it was on that map, that plant? And for the Exit 325 LLC, right? That's the petition, not 335.
Yes, that's right, 325. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. It's approved. Public hearing is closed. 2018 financial report, Kim Pickett.
We are halfway through the year. They said this year's same December's financial reports, we should be at 50%. At the end of December, we were at 54.23% revenues and 54.26% expenses, so we're right on the mark. Because the mayor asks me about every Friday, I'll let you guys know. At the end of December, we were at $734,000 in property tax revenue. I already have January's numbers in, although you're not seeing that in this report. At the end of January, we were at $1.4 million in property tax revenue, which is gonna bring the library and the parks and recreation revenues at 100%. And then we are 84174 in DMV taxes, so.
How much more taxes do we have to come in, roughly?
Roughly, probably 100,000.
100,000, so that's good. Any questions, or Kim? Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes, ayes. Kimberly and Matt Smith, is that...
So, as we continue to upfit the gymnasium and remodel it, I bring forth to you a purchase order for Sam's Masonry to replace the windows in the gym with glass block windows. Apparently, this is a one-stop shop, and there's not that many people that do glass block anymore. But we chose to do glass block because there is quite a bit of vandalism out there as far as the windows go, and we're hoping that this will alleviate. They're harder to break. If they do break, they're just breaking a small portion of it, not the entire window. So, we bring forth to you Sam's Masonry at $23,400. If you approve this purchase order, we still have $217,000 left in insurance money. And the only thing we have left for the gymnasium is an HVAC system, which we put out for bid last week, and we'll have that brought forth to y'all in March. And we are going to insulate the roof. So, I've got to go get two more quotes for that, and I'll bring that quote to you in March as well. Other than that, all the pieces are in place, and the roof is getting, should be done this week pending the weather.
Any other questions, or Kim? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
So, on your agenda, consider approval of purchase order for library furniture and shelving. This is the project approved at the November Town Board meeting. This quote from Carolina Furnishing and Design was approved by the Library Board at the meeting February 4th. They were the lowest quote. They're a local, semi-local company, they're from Moore County. They sent a design team on-site to look at the space. They were the only ones to do that. So, they, overall, they just came up with the best quote for what we were looking for. Answer any questions you may have.
Now, this, this is coming out of the excess funds you have in the library?
Yes, sir. Library is our fund.
Any questions, or Terry?
I don't have any questions, Board, but I attended that meeting, and I did see what Carolina Furnishing had given Terry, and it was amazing, the before and after pictures of the work. So, I was impressed with the work that they presented to Terry and the fact that they came on-site where the other groups didn't. So, I think this is a good group for us to use.
Any other questions, or Terry? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the lobby furniture shelving for Carolina Furnishing and Design.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Matt's up.
Yes, sir. I may ask for a little bit of assistance from our finance and public works teams. We worked collectively to put out a bid for 2019 on our wastewater treatment plant mowing. We had multiple bids opened, and we have a low bidder who is new to us, and our staff went out and validated the references of the new bidder. The winning contract, the lowest contract, is JDR Lawn Care Incorporated. They were the lowest responsive bidder at $31,800 for the 10-month contract, so $3180 per month. Staff is bringing forward a request to award that bid for the wastewater treatment plant mowing for the balance of 2019.
Any questions, or Matt?
I'm gonna see, what's the acreage out there that they could be mowing?
In excess of 23, and then it's 11 pump stations. There's 12 different sites and acreage there. To put it in perspective, our current contract that sunsetted at the end of 2018 was $4,000 a month. So, by going out and casting another bid, we were able to save over $800 a month.
Do we do any of our own mowing now?
No, not in any major areas. So, by going and subcontracting this, that would take us to greater than 95% of the town's mowing is then would be outsourced. And if you'll see under the mowing bid conversation, what we're proposing to bring our contracts into alignment, Public Works Utilities Director, Mr. Robbins, and I discussed allowing our current contracts that are sunsetting July 1st, providing an extension to those two contractors, so it would be Mark Lane and Chuck Lee Services, that we would allow those to run through the end of December because it's much easier for the contractor and for Benson to bid in fourth quarter of the year for the upcoming year. So, to answer Mr. Johnson's questions, there may be one or two particular small areas that we have to go out and maintain on a infrequent basis, but this would take us to nearly 100% of Benson's lawn maintenance with the subcontract, which we found to be cost-effective, and they do a very nice job.
Now, going up to the end, put them all great in, or you gonna end up trying to combine them all together?
No, sir, we think it's best to bid, you ultimately have a contract at 32,000, 33,000, a contract at 33,000, and a contract at 31,800. So, we split the mowing up virtually, nailed a third, a third, a third. The reason we do that is to not have all your eggs in one basket, and so, if one lawn contractor got behind or had an illness or equipment failure, that it's not snowballing into all the maintenance areas. If we go back for bid in fourth quarter, we would bid the right-of-way mowing, which is all your interchanges in between the railroad and whatnot. The facilities maintenance, which is all of our parks, recreations, and unischool building. And then the third would be to bid this out virtually identical again in fourth quarter. You may have a contractor that comes in as low bidder on all three, and then that decision would fall to the boards. We wanted to have one contractor do all three. You may have two. And so, whatever those scenarios are, based on the bidding. But you can see with the results, I think it's page 104, how much more efficient the bidding process was. So, you had a range of 31, $3,180 a month all the way up to $5,804 a month. So, by bidding it out, there's a substantial savings to be met there.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Mayor, is it possible that if the board wanted to take action on allowing us to negotiate and extend our contracts between July and December, we would ask for second clarity on mowing of them on C number two? It will help us align those and give our contractors fair warning for the season ahead? That's a recommendation coming from Tim and Stan.
So, you want to have this run out the 15th of December, is that what you're saying?
Either the 15th or 31st of December. I think their contract, you could extend it five and a half months, or you could extend it six months. But the reality is, you would have them maintained throughout the end of the year as opposed to a mid-season cycle stop in July. It would be fair and reasonable to run it through the end of the year.
Somebody would make a motion to...
I make a motion to approve.
To extend the contract through the end of December. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, man.
We thank you all for that. What you can see under the manager's report, we have quite a bit happening. Really, the next biggest item, next immediate item on your agenda is the participation in the board retreat on February 22nd and 23rd. We were working today on putting your board packets together. We thank the team that worked on the planning for getting it all set. And we are slated to be at the Hampton Inn in Benson on 22nd, which is Friday at 6:00 PM. We would hope to conclude by 9:00. And then back on Saturday, breakfast will be available early. We'd like to begin at 8:00 AM, and as long as it takes us to be there, we would assume that to be around the 2:00 or 2:30 mark on Saturday. Any questions about the retreat or needs or concerns that many, any of the board members have for us as we're finalizing our preparation?
And, you know, we'd love to talk a little bit about the budgets while we're there too, that the plans that we made kind of fit with what we're thinking about budget-wise.
That's the items that we have, are your team. So, is there anything else in specific that you want to cover that's not on your agenda for the retreat?
No, I'm just saying, think about budgets while we're talking about what we have on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Then in March, you have a board meeting on the 12th, and then your budget-focused meeting on the 28th. And you can see the comprehensive, which will use Community Transportation Plan Steering Committee meeting. We had our first one last night, excellent attendance, 22 people. And then our next one is slated for March 11th, and then we continue on on the second Mondays. We do want to remind you that the Black History Month Open House and Celebration begins at 2:00 PM on February 24th, and we've done quite a bit of promotion. We're excited that attendance may be standing room only again and may spill out into the doorway. So, if you want to get there, please get there early. We're encouraging you to get there early. And our anniversary comes up March 7th, and we're back in the library for Jama Storytime on March 11th. So, that takes us out for the next 30 days. I'd like to give the board an update of where we are with recruitment. Over 100 total applications were received for our human resources position and our downtown business position. We're very thankful we've had extremely high caliber applicants in this pool. So, we are moving right through. We've had multiple interviews, and we hope to continue interviews as of tomorrow morning and throughout the remainder of next week. So, a decision will be made shortly, but the good news is exceptional applicants. We'll bring that information forward to you as soon as we window that down to the top two candidates. In addition, I'd like to thank Chief Edwards, who did an exceptional job today. We went to JCC. Tyler Douglas attended with us, and we presented in front of the current basic law enforcement training class. Dr. Wicker at JCC spent time with us. We actually shared lunch with her, and she's helping us with our recruitment process and is a huge fan of the town of Benson. She was an active sworn, still is a sworn police officer even though she has her PhD, and she is, she has served here during meal days, and she is very, very supportive of us and is going to work with us to diversify and advertise a pro- us and is going to work with us to diversify and advertise appropriately to continue to recruit to Benson. So, Chief Edwards is on his game today, and it's just nice to see the enthusiasm for our department and all that's happening. So, whether we're recruiting for our human resources new role or backfilling our business development role or out in the field trying to find the next two to three officers, the whole staff is actively working on it. And today, we were very well represented at JCC, so I'd like to thank Chief for that.
Man, is it possible to get some more chairs to go in and use in for Black History?
I would defer that to you, Cultural Arts Director.
We can try. It's pretty tight the way, even when we move some exhibits around right now.
Well, you've got that aisle, though, that kind of lines up with the podium, and I hate to see people standing up. If we could get some more chairs so that they'd sit.
We can try.
Think about it. Ike, do you have anything?
I have everything, unless there are questions.
Anything, Commissioner? You know, we've got the meeting with the legislators on the 20th, and we've got, right now, we've got three people going, and I think, I don't know whether they've closed the registration or not, but we're gonna have our legislators at the table for this. Is anybody else thinking about going?
This is February 20th?
The 20th.
I'll be in front of Warren's son. Come back. I'm gonna come back. I'd love to go.
Anybody have a report? The other night, I talked about the Jimmy Count's recognition for the month of May. This has the opportunity of being a big operation, and we're hoping, we've got a meeting on the 27th, and we hope to get most of the things put in place so that Tyler, I've asked Tyler to come to our meeting, and we'll get something out to the board to make sure they know, you know, what we're gonna have and where it's gonna be. But this will be quite a recognition for him. He's had 20, 60 years at the Grand Ole Opry, and they recognized him a few weeks ago. And we've got a top-notch band that's coming to play, a concert, and Jimmy will be playing with that band. So, by the next meeting, I think we'll have things pretty well settled down so that the board can put their blessings on what's been done, hopefully. Anything else we need to bring before?
I failed to mention that I may be out of the building a little bit the rest of the month. We have gone on a speaking tour, so due to all the innovative things that the town's doing, we are chairing, I'm actually the chairperson for the Connections Summit for the state of North Carolina, February 20th, 21st, and 22nd, the Wednesday through Friday in Raleigh leading up to your board retreat. So, that was a distinct honor for Benson and its market system to be recognized to chair that program. So, we'll be there. And we are at the Clean Tech Summit speaking again. I looked at Terry because we're all over the map. We're in Chapel Hill at the Clean Tech Summit, and again, on another panel on February 28th. So, if you happen to try to stop by or give a phone call and I'm not in the building, just know that we're in Raleigh, and then we're back in Chapel Hill for a few days this month. But what we're doing with the staff is fully prepared for the board retreat, and if you have any questions at all, I'm either accessible via phone or I've been coming in early to make sure that all of our daily duties are addressed in addition to being on the tour. So, we're out speaking the goodwill of Benson and trying to market ourselves to all the economic development opportunities that we have.
One last thing for the commissioners. Everybody received the packet to evaluate Matt? Everybody get that?
Yeah.
It came by email.
Oh, wow.
We had printed copies for today's closed session. We'll give you the printed copies today.
But what we would like to do over the next couple of weeks is get those filled out, and Ike is going to pull them together. And he will then bring back to the last meeting in March, the consolidated numbers, and we'll go into private or into closed session.
So, get those to me, right?
Huh?
Get those...
Give all the individual ones to Ike, and he's going to consolidate them, and then give us one back with the consolidated numbers, averaged. Everybody understand?
So, we have printed copies for you tonight. We have them upstairs. We'll run them down to you right now and hand them out so that you have them to work on.
Yeah, I downloaded, but I didn't know if that was the right one or not.
What you should have is the cover memo that we always provide you annually. You have the most recent review so that you have it for reference purposes, and then you have the blank item for the upcoming. And what you always ask, just like we do of staff, is the employee does his or her self-evaluation, and then they list for you issues of performance or deficiencies, areas of need or concern. And then we work together to establish goals from a supervisor to a subordinate. So, you have basically the cover email. You'll also have the evaluation that was produced in 2017, because we didn't do one in spring of '18. And then you'll have the blank one for '19 with your, your components will be blank, and I've already filled out my self-evaluation with achievements that we've made over the last 16 months. So, we'll have those packets here for you in about two minutes.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you.
Thank you.